Illegal for women, 80% were men. Representation is about acting or serving on behalf of or in place of someone. Of the six states that have now made it illegal for a woman to choose to have an abortion, 66% of those governors were men. Who did they represent? Because taking a woman's choice to have an abortion primarily affects young impoverished black women. 68% of black Americans support choice. 74% of young Americans support choice. 63% of women support choice. In fact, 61% of the entire country supports choice. So for me, this is a strong lesson in the value of representation and I hope a wake-up call for all the individuals who do not feel represented, for them to become involved in government, exercise their right to vote, and to get a seat at the decision-making table. With that, I'm going to pass this over to council members on.
You of what was to come. It was still such a shock when we got the news last week. And it feels like we've gone back 50 years in terms of my daughters, my daughter's generation, future generations are going to have less rights as women than we did. And it's hard to even put those feelings into words. And yet, I think as local electeds, even though that was a federal decision, don't think we can turn away from the fact that this impacts every person in our community, whether they are women or not. And since we've gotten that news, as I've engaged with the community, what I've heard clearly is the sense of hopelessness, anger, and frustration from our community that feels like, actually, so many have lived experience with abortion for any number of reasons that are their own personal choice to make, and just how difficult those decisions are and not to be taken lightly. So that ability to have body autonomy and being able to make your own choices about your own body is key to our very humanity and our very freedoms. So this decision is not going to prevent abortions. Instead, it will make it much more challenging and difficult for women that don't have the financial means to be able to have access to safe abortion as part of healthcare. And really, that access to healthcare is the very human right and dignity that we should have available for all peoples versus those that live in a state like Washington where we recognize that our bodies and our choices matter. And yet, I worry about all the states where the women don't have those rights. And I also heard from many in the community about their very concern about what this might foretell for other rights that may be taken away. And, you know, yet, this last weekend was Pride Weekend, and I think very much about our LGBTQ plus community members and how frustrated and scared they must be right now to think that their very identities and freedoms are at risk, and how we, as a city council, support our community during this time. So I don't have any answers, just feeling like we need to not be quiet. Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. I appreciate and agree wholeheartedly with Mayor Robinson and Councilmembers on on this. My first foray into politics was as a volunteer for the National Abortion Rights Action League when I was in college. And then, when I was in law school, I worked on the Initiative 120 campaign in 1991, which codified Roe versus Wade in Washington. And we didn't, but we didn't, I didn't stop working even at that point because at that point, Roe versus Wade was just, you know, it was one decision. And I remember after Initiative 120 passed in 1991 in Washington, when the Casey decision came out in 1992, I was still in law school at the end of my second year, and I remember taking a big sigh of relief, thinking, okay, now this is codified. I mean, not codified, but now this is locked down, the precedent's there, the precedent of Roe is safe. And for the last, how many years? 30 years, I have thought the precedent of Roe is safe because of that Casey decision. And to have it flip has just been really devastating, I think, to all, everyone in America, but especially for women and girls and people without means to go to another state, for the states where it's become illegal. The court took what was a fundamental right and turned it into something that's a privilege if you live in a state where it's where you still have that right. And things like that should not be decided by the states. They should, that's a fundamental right, and what could be more fundamental than controlling your own body? Because if you don't have bodily autonomy, you can't have economic freedom, you can't have freedom to, you know, create the life that you want if you can't control your own body. So I feel really just devastated for the next generation, and my three daughters have, will, if they lived in a state out of Washington, will have fewer rights than I grew up with. And I find that very sad. I also think that this is going to lead to a lot more stratification because people who have money to go to another state will continue to have the freedom to control their body and control whether they bear or beget children, and people who have no means will not. And so that is just, it's just really unfair and just what a, what a loss for our country. And as Councilmember Zahn said, this does not get, abortion before it was legal across the country still happened in states where it was illegal, it just was less safe. So what we're doing is we're making women and girls less safe by this decision unless they have the privilege of living in a state like Washington. So, you know, like I said, without bodily autonomy, we do not have life, and we do not have liberty, and we cannot pursue our happiness. So it's a real problem. And thank you for giving us the chance to speak about this. This hits very, very deeply. Like I said, it was the first foray into politics was working on this issue at the local and state level. And it's, yeah, it feels like a very dark day today. Thanks.
Thank you. Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, I believe that there is a motion for an excusal as well.
Okay, you're right. I don't have my notes in front of me. Is there, would you like to make the motion?
Certainly, Mayor, I move to excuse Councilmember Lee from tonight's meeting.
Oh, second. I think this is a straightforward vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great.
All right. And with that, Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee has been excused, as we heard. Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jesse.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are three speakers signed up this evening to speak, and I will remind the public that oral communications is for a period of no longer than 30 minutes, and speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and only three people are allowed to speak on any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Christopher Randles, and I believe Mr. Randles is joining us virtually. Mr. Randles, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Barely.
We need to turn the volume up on our end, I think.
Ben, in the back, if you could turn the audio in the council room up for our virtual participants. Mr. Randles, can you speak again?
Yes, take two. Can you hear me now?
Hold one more minute.
That's fine. Take your time.
He can hear me. Okay, Mr. Randles, can we try one more time?
Of course. I'm also leaning in a little bit. Have on.
Yep, no, this is great. Thank you. Your time begins now.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and councilmembers. This is not what I was actually going to testify on tonight, but I did want to just follow up and thank the three of you for speaking on that topic. I found all of your comments very moving. Thank you, Councilmember Robertson, Councilmembers on, and Mayor Robinson for those very touching comments. This is certainly on everybody's mind in the community, and so thank you for addressing that this evening. I'll keep my actual comments short. I'm testifying tonight on behalf of the streets Bellevue, the organization working to make Bellevue accessible for everyone, no matter how they get around our city. And this evening, I'm just speaking to express our organization's strong support for the set of multimodal concurrency code amendments before you. Across multiple in-person and virtual events that our organization has hosted over the last year and a half, we've heard a consistent and clear message from the dozens and dozens of community members who have attended them. Although the city is making significant improvements, Bellevue still has a long way to go before all parts of our city are safe to get to with accessible infrastructure for people walking, biking, and taking transit. This current state of affairs can in many ways be directly traced to much of the city's code language and concurrency policies, which up to this point have only accounted for automobile traffic, a framework that has unfortunately overlooked the many, many Bellevue residents who already rely on walking, biking, or like, or transit as their main way to get around in the city. As this council has repeatedly affirmed, language does matter, and that's why the proposed amendments to the Transportation Development Code and the Transportation Impact Program Policy, although minor, are important. They acknowledge the dual reality that many people in Bellevue are already getting around the city outside of a car, and that with issues of climate change and significant growth on the horizon, our city's future will need to be one that relies more heavily on greener, more equitable forms of mobility than private vehicles. The multimodal concurrency standards that we encourage you to adopt this evening lay some important groundwork in this area by giving more flexibility for how our city can support its growth with additional types of transportation investments. All of these policies are the product of significant outreach and some good work from the Transportation Commission, and we appreciate everyone's involvement, from staff to the commission, to councilmembers themselves, to the public. Everybody's really gotten involved in this process that it's really great. CSP and the residents, workers, and students we represent are looking forward to staying engaged throughout the implementation process of these code amendments, and we're happy to encourage councilmembers to support their adoptions this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Randles. Our next speaker on the list is Dr. Sue Mercer. Ms. Mercer is joining us in person.
For those of you, I'm not being heard over the microphone.
We can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. For those of you who don't know me, I am Dr. Mercer, and I moved to Bellevue June 1969, 15436 Southeast 20th Place, which is just above 156. I look on Phantom Lake in the Cascade Mountains. I have been paying for the streets all that time, and I am very upset now that we are allowing streets to be blocked off downtown so big, tall buildings can be built, and I would like to see that changed so that the streets can be used by the people who have already paid for them. And potholes should have precedence over landscaping, and resurfacing should have precedence over landscaping. Now, that's not anywhere near as important as the homeless situation. Please look up my website, M E T S O F dot com. That gives you all my information. That stands for Mercer Evangelical Trade School and Orphanage Foundation. It has two missions. My daughter was in the Peace Corps in 1997, and that's when I found out there were children washing wind screens, that's what they call them in Jamaica, to survive and not going to school. And so I'm trying to set up a school where they will learn to repair Volvos, and if you can repair a Volvo, you can repair anything. They will also learn auto body. And to that end, I have 20 Volvos that I intend to set up as transportation for the disadvantaged, this kind of ties in with what the other person had to say. We will be asking for a donation of half of what.
I'm sorry, we can't do fundraisers or talk about that at the council.
Well, you can look it up in my website. Anyway, we will be using the streets. And I house homeless people in my home, and that doesn't cost the city anything, but it does take some homeless people off the street. And I want to appreciate the support that I have had in the past when some of these people have mental illness and addiction problems, and I've had to call the police. They show up. I appreciate that. But we need to make sure that we have sufficient mental health and addiction programs right here in Bellevue, and that they are good programs. They're far better than what you've got up in Skagit County. My time's up. I'd really like to meet with each of you individually to go over in depth on some of these issues of what we can do here. And I can give you a story if you have time later.
Thank you, Ms. Mercer.
On the issue you three ladies spoke of.
Thank you, Ms. Mercer. The next speaker on our list is Alex Zimmerman.
The high, my dirty, damn Nazi fascist mafia, bandito and psychopath. My name, Alex Zimmerman. Couple words about abortion. It's a real circus, what they never see in my life. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Democratic propaganda. Women have right, have right for abortion. Hundred percentage, I support them, and I support court decision too. But women have right only when she have pregnant from dildo. But most women pregnant for have conversation with men. You know what this means? So is this situation, situation very strange. Women have right where is a man? I'm totally confused about this. It's number one. Number two, most people who have, most women who, most family, most women who have abortion right now, family, it's very important, or partner, is a white people. In white nation, right now, there's only one white race, right now, there's only one race who disappear. Why? Because women, young women, go in doing this stupid idea. You know what this means? This is exactly what's happened. I give you a little bit statistics. Seattle, 50% of women before 40 mentally sick. It's not my opinion, it's statistic. Okay, you need to understand, you need to stop in this circus.
We need to take a recess. We've lost our quorum. Can you pause your comments, please?
Yeah, yeah.
We did.
Right now, I will speak about Amazon. Yeah. Amazon, that's very interesting situation. Amazon will become, this dinosaur will be destroyed Bellevue total. Another 25,000 people, they talking about 25, probably will become 40 or 40, maybe 50 for another few years. This is exactly what's happened. But this very interesting nuance, Amazon want go to New York, and New York is a 12 million people, and they refuse this Amazon because Amazon is a mafia, a bandito. This is exactly. So my question right now, very simple, when New York city with 12 million people don't can accept this dirty, bad bug, like Amazon, why Bellevue? 150,000 idiot will be accept this monster. This is a mafia, this dinosaur who eat Bellevue for breakfast. This is exactly what is will be happen. I told about this in 96, 30 year ago, about Microsoft. Look what has happened with Bellevue for 30 years with Microsoft. Amazon will be destroyed. In goal of Amazon, very simple, they want control everything. This exactly happened. Rent for last six year doubled. This exactly what is Amazon doing right now. They push and push and push so people can be totally controlling. And who will lose? Poor people. Stand up, America. We need something be smarter because you a zombie. You don't do nothing. Thank you very much.
That is the end of our pre-registered speaker list this evening. I would ask if there's anyone joining us here in chambers who would like to make comment to the council or anyone joining us virtually. If you're joining us virtually, please use star nine to raise your hand. Mayor, I do not see any hands in person or virtually.
Okay, thank you. The good news about our country is we have freedom of speech and freedom of listening. I exercised my freedom. So we are on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Miyake.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and councilmembers. We have some good news to report this evening under the manager's report, and that is the recent Mobility Implementation Award that the city recently received from the PSRC due to the great, due to the great staff work with the Transportation Department, work of the commission, Transportation Commission, as well as the strong leadership on the, on part of the council. So joining us this evening is Andrew Singleakis, the Transportation Director. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Andrew to introduce our guest tonight.
Well, thank you, City Manager Miyake, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council. We're here pleased to receive the PSRC Vision 50, 2050 Award for the Mobility Implementation Plan. And with me is Paul Ingram, the Director of Growth Management at PSRC, to present the award. I would also like to acknowledge the Chair of the Transportation Commission, Karen Stash, Paula Stevens, Assistant Transportation Director, and Kevin McDonald, who is a project manager. They're all here tonight for this event. The MIP is the result of extensive public outreach and meetings and work sessions of the Transportation Commission, lays the groundwork for multimodal concurrency, which is the ordinance that you're going to be having in study session tonight. And the Transportation Department's been working toward a modern multimodal transportation system for many years, but this really is the, the MIP was the culmination of a lot of that work. The multimodal approach will result in a transportation system that's equitable, measurable, and sustainable. And I'm honored to receive this award, and I'd like to thank staff for the really hard work that they did getting us to this point. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew, and my pleasure to be here, Mayor Robinson and councilmembers. For those that don't know me, I'm, as Andrew said, Director of Growth Management at the Puchas County Regional Council. I know many of you are familiar with PSRC. For those that aren't, PSRC is the agency in which the four counties and the 82 cities of the region come together to work on transportation, growth management, environmental, and economic development as a region. Vision 2050 awards is really our honor to recognize some of the outstanding work here at Bellevue and in communities throughout the region, working to implement the region's plan, Vision 2050, that looks out to the year 2050 of how to make our community stronger and healthier and more vibrant. I'm here today to recognize this great planning work, the Bellevue's, Bellevue's Mobility Implementation Plan. Your work is being recognized in our Planning Ahead category, and I can't think of a better example. And I'd say, many of you know, I used to work at the city many years ago. I used to work as a firm in downtown Bellevue in the early 90s, and I have to say, it's amazing coming back to Bellevue, coming to Bellevue every time since the, those, that time period, and just seeing the amount of investment that you make in your community in the transportation projects and how much the city continues to evolve. The Mobility Implementation Plan, it's an outstanding example of how planning ahead can meet a multimodal future envisioned locally and regionally. You've set up a system that looks at performance measures and priorities to align your transportation investments with your city's land use vision. This will allow the city to make the right transportation investments at the right place at the right time. This approach gives the city an opportunity to balance supply with demand and create a template to achieve a complete and connected multimodal transportation system in Bellevue. So congratulations on your award.
Well, thank you. Did you have something more you guys say? I was just going to jump in here.
No, just a photo op would be nice.
Yeah, let's do that. But Paul, welcome back.
Thank you very much.
We've missed you. We're working on our comp plan again.
Right.
So thank you so much for this award. I'd like to invite us all down and all of you up to take a picture. Thank you, City Manager. Anything else to add?
Mayor, thank you.
All right, terrific. I believe we're on to, excuse me, the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. I don't have any notes. I believe we're on to our study session items, am I right?
You are correct.
Okay, Mr. Miyake, we have two, right? So let's go ahead and introduce the first.
Yes, there's, yeah, there are two topics this, tonight on your study session agenda. And the first topic are proposed multimodal concurrency amendments that you heard from this evening on oral communications. These are needed to implement recent council policy direction. To that end, tonight, we're going to do two things. One, review the Transportation Commission's recommendation for replacing existing code with a new multimodal concurrency code. And two, seek council direction to return at a future council meeting with an ordinance to adopt the proposed code amendments as recommended by the Transportation Commission and staff. So joining us this evening are Mark Poe, Assistant Director, Molly Johnson, Development Review, Transportation Manager in the Transportation Department, and we're also are going to be joined by Karen Stash, Chair of our Transportation Commission. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the team.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Miyake, and good evening to the mayor and to the entire council. It's nice to be here tonight. My name is Karen Stash, and I have the honor of being the new Chair of the Transportation Commission. And tonight, we are going to be asking for your approval on the proposal on the multimodal concurrency code amendments. So a little bit of history as to how we got here tonight. In April, the council had asked and instructed the Transportation Commission to look at these amendments, to propose something. And so we spent two of our meetings pretty much diving into the details of this in April. And then the staff did a great job, as well as the consultant team here, in reaching out to the public, and there was a virtual open house in May. So then, in early June, it came back to the Transportation Commission, and we voted on that and unanimously approved what you'll be hearing tonight. So that gets us to today, and you will hear the details from these folks. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
And thank you, Chair Stash. Good evening, council. And we are excited to be here this evening as we take a look at some really excellent award-winning planning work and move it forward towards implementation. And our intention for you tonight is to further ground you in that. We'll share some slides with you, about 10 minutes worth, and then we will all be available to take any questions that you have. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. There we go. The direction that we're seeking from you this evening is to have you ask us to return to a future meeting date to approve the code amendment adoptions that you're going to be Okay, our agenda this evening, we'll start off with our ask of you, and then we'll go over the policy that is now in place to enable us to move forward with multimodal concurrency. We'll then do a quick overview of concurrency itself, both at the state level and then how it filters down to Bellevue. We'll briefly go over the proposed code amendments, and then we'll finish up with next steps. All right, in terms of policy, you'll recall back in December of 2021, we had a comp plan amendment. back in December of 2021, we had a comp plan amendment where the transportation element was revised to include TR 28, and that was some policy language towards multimodal concurrency and specifically to employ a citywide multimodal level of service concurrency standard that provides transportation facilities that meet the demand for new development. Also, in April of 2022 this year, as you just heard about, the award-winning Mobility Implementation Plan, that's when you adopted that plan, and that plan was really important because it contained the framework for implementing multimodal concurrency. So with that framework, along with the comp plan policy, when we went to embark on writing the code, most of that framework was already in place. So we just placed what we needed to do to implement those policies into the code, and that's what you'll be seeing this evening. And then lastly, I just want to mention that the, because of the code change, or because of the policy changes, the existing concurrency system really is no longer supported by code itself. Now, go ahead and go over concurrency in general, starting with the state law and then down through how it works here in Bellevue and what is proposed. Wait just a second for the next slide. If not, I'll just go ahead and keep going. There we go. Okay. So at the state law level, that's the Growth Management Act, of course. And the Growth Management Act requires that if you're going to allow development in your city, you need to be growing your transportation system at the same time or concurrently with that development. The Growth Management Act also requires that you establish a standard, and that's used to determine if the proposed development's impacts are accommodated by those improvements that you're making to the transportation system. Next slide. Okay. The existing concurrency system in Bellevue has been around for nearly as long as the Growth Management Act, about three decades, and it's very specific. It looks at the vehicle mode of transportation, and it looks at that at only a small portion of our transportation system, selected system intersections. And the standard that is used today is also very specific. It looks at congestion levels at those intersections. By contrast, the proposed new multimodal concurrency code is more system completeness or plan-based. And by system completeness, we mean the implementation of a transportation system to improve mobility for all modes of travel that aligns with a planned amount of growth and a planned amount of transportation spending. So it's really based on what we do very well here at Bellevue, our planning. In order to implement the multimodal concurrency system, we need to establish what are called mobility units. And there's really two important mobility units. The first is a mobility unit of supply, and that's what the city provides, supply of transportation. And we do that by investing in transportation improvements that help all modes of transportation. As we implement these supply units through the capital investment program, they're placed in a bank or a bucket, and they're made available for consumption by development. The other mobility unit of note is the mobility unit of demand. That's what new development proposals produce. So a new developer comes into the door, they have a certain trip-making characteristics that they'll add to the system. We convert those into mobility units of demand, and then we check our new standard. That standard is if the mobility units of supply in our bank are greater than the mobility units of demand needed by that particular development, then the concurrency standard is met, and that development moves on. And that system continues on with each development that comes into the door, and it also has a replenishment of our mobility units of supply each time we update the CIP and bring in new transportation projects. Okay. All right. Now, the proposed code amendments. There are three code amendments in your agenda material. The first one, the amendment to the Traffic Standards Code, is the most important, the most substantive. The other two are minor adjustments that really update the nomenclature to be consistent with the new multimodal concurrency code. So they don't change the way that the Transportation Development Code or the Impact Fee Program perform at all. But what is new, because multimodal concurrency is so different from the existing system that we have today, we are asking you to totally repeal the Traffic Standards Code, where the existing system currently resides, and replace it with a new multimodal concurrency code. All right. Some highlights of that proposed code amendment. As I mentioned, it replaces the Traffic Standards Code. As Chair Stash mentioned, it is Transportation Commission-recommended unanimously, a number of work sessions. As Chair Stash also mentioned, there was public outreach that was completed for this new code. That included a virtual open house where we got a number of verbal comments that we addressed. We have also received four written comments from the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, the Bellevue Downtown Association, Wright Runstead, and also from Kevin Wallace with Wallace Properties, all in unanimous support of moving this code amendment forward. Importantly, the code provides a provision for an implementation guide. The implementation guide is needed for the details of the program. For instance, it documents the model for determining those mobility units that I mentioned. It explains to practitioners and to staff how to implement and run the program, and it establishes guidelines to monitor and update the system on a periodic basis. So that implementation guide, very important. We will have a public hearing on that, and I'll show you where that fits here in just a moment. After the implementation guide is approved, the code will become effective 30 days afterwards, and the new system will be in place. And that's all possible to accomplish this year. So in summary, the new proposed code amendments will enable staff to implement the new concurrency system as intended per the recent policy. All right. What's been accomplished? You know about the comp plan amendment and the MIP adoption back in April, the commission study sessions, the virtual open house, those have all been accomplished. And what's to come? Hopefully soon, maybe on July 5th, you'll have us back to consider the adoption of these code amendments. If you are able to do that, that'll keep us on schedule for our implementation guide hearing at the Transportation Commission. That is currently scheduled for September 8. We'll take any comments we get from that public hearing. We'll consider those with our Transportation Director, and ultimately, we'll make any adjustments, and our director will approve that guide. Once that's done, the code will be effective 30 days after, and we're shooting for mid-October for that to occur. And then we'd have the new multimodal concurrency system up and running. And again, a reminder, our direction is to seek council direction to return at a future meeting with an ordinance to adopt the proposed code amendments. With that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Councilmember Zon, are you liaison to the Transportation Commission?
I am.
Why don't you start us off?
Sure. Happy to. Well, I am just super excited and so thankful for the rapid work from the Transportation Commission and staff. And yet, with that said, I think we've been working on multimodal for many years, from when I was on the Transportation Commission. So, so exciting to see this award-winning multimodal implementation plan, and now these code amendments in front of us for adoption. I think that it brings us into a future looking where it is about multimodal and not have a concurrency that's grounded only in vehicles, because that is the future that we are heading for in addition to where we currently are and moving ever faster and faster. So I'm excited about that and really to accommodate the future growth. My one question is, it looks like in the impact fee section, the only change was to take out the PMPEAK. So the intent is that as we adopt this new multimodal and the code amendments, that the impact fee is still grounded on looking at where the investments make sense in our CIP to support the growth that we see in the different areas, and then having the impact fees to pay for the impacts of those growth accordingly. I think that's what you mentioned, that's what's in the information, but I just want to clarify that because it wasn't in the presentation.
Thanks for the question. I think to clarify, the changes that we made to the impact fee code were to clarify that it currently applies only to vehicles.
Okay.
So we haven't proposed any changes, although, you know, I'm sure we'll hear from the Transportation Commission and you all to look into that sometime soon. But at this point, we're only changing the concurrency code, and the impact fee code remains the same.
Okay. So the adoption in the October is just this piece, and then as we move along, because we do periodically look at, update our impact fees, then that discussion will happen at that time?
If directed.
Yes.
If directed. Okay, great. Well, I'm super excited to be in support of this. I don't know if that's our direction, is to just get our support. So, thank you.
Councilmember Robertson, you're the former...
Thank you, yes. This has been coming since that time or before that time. So thank you. You've actually taken what is a really complicated issue and broken it down really nicely, I think. So, great presentation. Thank you to the Transportation Commission. I hear you guys have been working on this a long time. It's good to see it finally come forward. I am supportive of this coming forward, as I was supportive of the pre-work on this. So, yeah, I don't really have any questions. I think that this is the appropriate next step. It recognizes how people do move around today, which is differently than when the code was originally written, and it also is, it takes into account how people will move around in the future. So I think it's really appropriate. And so, yeah, I'm happy to have this move forward. I'd be happy if it came on consent when it comes back, if my colleagues would support that as well. Yeah, let's just, let's keep going. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Stokes.
Well, great. Well, thank you for the presentation, first of all. And yes, absolutely in favor of this and want to move this forward. To the consent calendar, next time is before us. Great work. I don't really have any questions, because I've had a couple of briefings on this and another presentation tonight. So, you know, feel very comfortable moving this forward, and I know the great work that's been done by the Transportation Commission on this as well, and obviously with liaisons going back numerous years. So we're at a point to move forward. I guess I would have one question. So let me sneak one in. I said there wasn't, but I got one. With this code, or with any new code, there are potentially some unintended consequences. I'm just curious as what the protocol will be to track the new code, and if any assumptions need to be revisited or corrected. What does that process look like, and does that include coming back before the council or not? So if you could speak to that just for a quick minute. But again, in favor of moving this forward tonight. Thank you.
One of the important parts of the implementation guide, as Mark stated, is that we will have a process for monitoring and updating the program. Since it's a brand-new program, we don't exactly know how it's going to go, and we have a lot of changes in the transportation system right now. Trip generation, all the stuff that we've looked at, you know, in the past, in the last two years, a lot has changed. So we anticipate that we would want to make some changes. We tried to keep the code as more of a framework, and then, so we had some room to change some of the specifics in the implementation through the implementation guide process, which does involve a public process with a public hearing if that gets changed. But we will monitor, if the system isn't working the way it should, then, and we need to make code changes, we will be back here.
Terrific. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, this is very exciting, and I'm ready to go forward on this. Just thinking here, Mark, remembering back, just to put some context of where we're going now, a couple of things. One was, at the time, I was not on the Parks Board, but was a representative of, from the community and with the East Gate. And I remember spending time, you know, on the whole thing of cars going up the lights when they change and all that, and how that fairly small system, I mean, is a different thing. And we spent all that time with that, and you were, you know, involved in this. And the other one that I was thinking about was the ET, the Eastside Transportation Partnership Conference back in 2017. We had two of those, actually. And that's where you made a presentation about our new computerized traffic lights. And that was taken into account in, you know, the concurrency and how that fits in and all these pieces. And that's like another, you know, decade ago. It's just amazing the progress we're taking. It's time. It's probably past time, but we're doing it. And really appreciate all the work, and it takes everybody working together like you have. So that's just amazing. It's always good to have these milestones and look back and say, yeah, we're doing things differently now because it's better, and you're doing that. Appreciate it very much, and I'm ready to bring this back and on consent. Thank you.
Well, I read this presentation in our packet, and I wrote one note, "What took so long?" I mean, it's a rhetorical question. You don't have to answer, but I'm just so pleased to see this moving forward, and we're all anxious to move it forward quickly now. And so I think coming back on consent is a great idea. So, is there a motion?
The reason I moved to direct staff... To return with an ordinance to adopt the proposed code amendments as recommended by the Transportation Commission and staff.
Do you want to include on consent?
To return on consent.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, terrific.
And Jennifer was at that same meeting on the Transportation.
I'm sure I was. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we were at all those meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Miyake, we have one more study session.
Mayor, councilmembers, we have one more topic for, on your study session agenda this evening, and it is the monthly regional issues briefing that you receive. Tonight is an informational briefing, which will focus on federal funding opportunities. Tonight's presentation will provide an update on the city's newly formed bipartisan infrastructure law team, bill team, as well as next steps on congressionally-directed spending and on the city's federal legislative agenda. Staff will also be available to answer any questions you may have on any of the reports that were in your packet for this evening. So joining us this evening is Genesi Atkins, Chief of External Affairs. This is her main voyage with the council on this particular, on the council monthly regional issues briefing. And joining her is Katie Kasimba-Halsey, Transportation Policy Advisor, both from the City Manager's Office. With that, I'll turn it over to the team.
Terrific. We'll just start chatting, if that's good. Mayor, deputy mayor, councilmembers, it is a pleasure to be in front of you. You do have attached in your packet the regional issues briefings across a number of different committees. We wanted to take a little bit of time tonight, though, to give you a bit of an update and a snapshot on some things that are happening with federal appropriations. And I apologize, I might not have said my name for the record. My name is Genesi Atkins, and I'm really happy to be here with Katie Halsey. We're really giving you a little bit of a snapshot of what's going on with your, since you adopted your federal agenda in April of this year. So let's go ahead to the next slide. Oh, you have it. Thank you. So as I was just mentioning, the federal legislative agenda that you developed earlier this year really is our compass and our north star for the work that we undertake and the way that we are looking at the opportunities ahead of us. It's a really helpful blueprint for us to really advance strategically, the things that are important to the city and where there are really good aligning opportunities. And so we are really happy to have that. It really is kind of stop one for us. A quick little update for you in terms of earmarks. So you remember that for quite a number of years, we did not have traditional earmarks as part of the congressional funding process, but they returned last year. To make things really easy, it has a really, really concise name, one in the Senate, one in the House, congressionally-directed spending and community project funding. And so, but it's also still okay to call them earmarks. So we're really excited to report to you that in this most recent round in the spring of this year, we worked across a number of different departments, and two of those requests are advancing from Senator Kentland, Senator Murray. So we're really excited about that. And we did get some feedback from the congressional delegation, because like us, they are still mapping out the bipartisan infrastructure law and the return of earmarks. And they have kind of said to us, hey, we're moving these forward because we think that they might not otherwise be eligible for some of those upcoming competitive grant programs. So they're definitely looking at the federal funding picture in a holistic way and considering our priority projects about what should go as an earmark and what should be better served in the competitive, either the formula or competitive funding programs that are coming out of the bipartisan infrastructure law. With that, I'll turn it over here to my colleague Katie Kasimba-Halsey.
Great. For the record, I'm Katie Kasimba-Halsey, Transportation Policy Advisor. It is so great to be with you today. It is so great to be with you today, and I love talking about this topic. So I'll try to make it as concise as possible. So I'm here talking about the bipartisan infrastructure law, also known as BIL, or B.I.L. It has also gone by a different name. Some people might refer to it as IIJA or the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. When it was going through Congress, it was called IIJA. When it was signed by the president, it became the bipartisan infrastructure law. So for the rest of the presentation tonight, I'll call it BIL. It was signed about seven months ago, and, boy, it is just a fast clip ever since. The BIL really does represent a massive, massive opportunity for local governments and cities and local organizations to invest in their communities, and we are certainly going to invest in ours as well. The legislation really marks a historic opportunity for local governments to have access to federal dollars at that federal level. And I'll explain a little bit more about what that means in a few coming slides. And I also wanted to point out that the administration has a few priorities that are going to be very important for us and for the rest of the country to consider during the implementation of the BIL, including equity, resiliency, and climate change, reaching all communities, including urban and rural and suburban and disadvantaged communities, and partnerships. One thing I really want to note is that not only are partnerships allowed in many of these competitive grant processes, but they're actually encouraged. And so we'll talk about that as well. Okay, so I said it was large. It is $1.2 trillion, that bill. The bill is the bill. And it is not only a policy piece of legislation, it is also a funding piece of legislation. And as you can see, it is really comprised of two different pieces of a funding package. One piece of the funding package is the existing programs. That's the $650 billion that you see on the screen. And those existing programs are things like the Surface Transportation Block Grant or the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program, otherwise known as CMAC. The second piece of that bucket is the new programs. So that's $550 billion in new formula, competitive, or discretionary grant programs. Those are new programs such as the Carbon Reduction Program or the National Electronic Vehicle and Infrastructure Formula Program, also known as NEVI, the National Culvert Removal or the Safe Streets for All programs. There are a lot of them. And in fact, there is so many of them, they have, it's, I believe, over 350 different programs that are comprised of the entire $1.2 billion. It's really incredible. So on the bar on the right-hand side, that colorful bar, what that is depicting is that new $550 billion. And what it's to show is that over 50% is really comprised of transportation funding. So while this is really an infrastructure program of many different means, over 50% is really geared towards transportation from that new funding. But it's not just about transportation. There are other opportunities for improvements in physical infrastructure sectors as well. And that's about $266 billion of that new federal funding. So there's upgrades to power infrastructure for clean energy and cutting-edge technology to achieve a zero emissions future. There, it delivers clean water to American families and eliminates the nation's lead service lines. It helps to ensure reliable access to high-speed internet through broadband infrastructure deployment. It has the largest investment of tackling pollution. It also makes infrastructure resilient against climate change, cyber attacks, and also extreme weather events. And something I think we should all be really thankful of is that our own delegation members really helped to include some grant programs to improve fish passage, ecological functions, and water quality, something that's very important here in Washington. Okay, so you might be wondering, how can cities, how can Bellevue, receive BIL funds? Well, there are two primary methods for distributing BIL funds. One is by formula, and the other is through competitive programs. And traditionally, Congress has used the formula distribution of federal grants to states or metropolitan planning organizations, also in our area, PSRC, with guidance. The federal government has given guidance for how those funds could be used or passed along to local governments. However, I think this is a real big shift from the federal government. The BIL is a signal that Congress sees regional and local governments as effective, if not more effective, at reaching communities who need that, the funding rapidly, perhaps more rapidly than what would happen if it went through the traditional formula process. For example of that, cities have access to about 30% of those new federal transportation competitive dollars. We have access to apply directly for those funds. And this really is a significant shift from what we've seen before. So we have a lot to prepare for, and it is really crucial that we do just that. So we are working right now to position the city for this influx of federal money. It is a five-year program, and we're about four and a half, or about six months, seven months into it, so we have about four and a half months to go. It is going to be a sprint. I've got my running shoes underneath my desk. I'll probably be putting them on as soon as I'm done with this presentation. And over the course of the next few slides, we'll make sure to let you know how we're preparing to be ready. So the first way that we're preparing is by developing a project pipeline across city departments. This is really our opportunity to think about projects that may have previously been considered impossible due to lack of funding or lack of regional support or coordination. And as Genese mentioned, we're really going to make sure to use that federal legislative agenda as our guiding post, as our compass in developing our project pipeline. But we're also going to use other resources as well. For instance, at the citywide level, we'll use the comprehensive plan. At the department level, we'll use the capital, the utilities capital investment plan and program, the enterprise technology system strategic plan, and even other plans that are happening within the department, such as the Vision Zero Plan. We'll also work with our partner agencies on implementing or reflecting what's in their own plans. So for instance, K4C has the Joint Climate Action Commitments, or Sound Transit has their ST3 plan. We'll make sure to reflect all of those plans as we're considering what our project pipeline is. Another step that we just kicked off, actually, is the city's new bipartisan infrastructure law, or BIL, interdepartmental team, which will now meet every three weeks. Members represent eight different departments that have the largest opportunity to benefit from BIL. It's not that the other departments won't be involved, they just might be supportive in our efforts. But these eight different departments will really have a lot to benefit from our coordination efforts. This cross-departmental team will really help to prioritize our infrastructure needs based on that project pipeline that I just mentioned and determine the rights, the right timing and cadence. You know, there's 350 different programs. If we all applied for the same at the same time, that would be very hard to manage. So what is the right timing and cadence for those applications? What is required from Bellevue? For instance, is there a local match? Is there some kind of requirement that we want to make sure that we understand upfront before we apply? We also want to make sure that we are addressing the administration priorities, such as equity, climate, resiliency, partnerships. And we're also consistent with regional plans, as I mentioned earlier. And finally, we really need to make sure that we assess whether we have our own staffing capacity, not only to apply for the grants, but also to administer the grants and to deliver on those projects that we will be winning shortly and soon. But ultimately, what we're really trying to do with the BIL interdepartmental team is demystify the process and to streamline it where we can. With this team, I'm feeling really confident that we'll be really well-positioned, because we'll have a cross-departmental team with a one-city approach. Okay. I think I might need help on this one. Oh, it just was a little bit slow. There we go. Another ongoing step that the city and all of the staff are working on is really to build and also to grow our relationships. So this would include our elected leadership, for instance, our congressional delegation and their staff at a staff-to-staff level. It may include department, department leadership, or those individuals who are administering the grants. We'll want to make sure that we understand what the needs are, but also get to know the faces behind the names. We'll want to make sure to also work with our stakeholders, including community-based organizations or community leaders. What are those opportunities for letters of support, perhaps partnerships, but also to reach out to traditionally underserved and historically disadvantaged populations during this process as well. I also want to mention there are just becoming a tremendous amount of resource organizations that are helping local cities, local jurisdictions through this process. I know that the Association of Washington Cities has really been helping at both a staff and an elected leadership level. The Washington State Department of Transportation has their local programs office. And then one that I'm really excited about, that will be coming on very soon, is the local infrastructure hub. And the National League of Cities is actually a sponsor of that. It'll be running in about two to three weeks, and I'm really looking forward to the support that that will be offering to cities and local jurisdictions across. So there is a lot to do. And so I'll pass it back over to you, Genese. You can cover the next steps.
Thank you, Katie. The one thing I want to just piggyback on, which is a little bit of a segue, is it's worth mentioning that just last week, a few of us were down at the annual meeting of the Association of Washington Cities. There was a panel around the BIL. And the good news and the bad news is, I don't think we learned anything new. So what that means is, I think we're kind of at the tip of the spear. I think we have, thanks to Katie and our terrific in-house resources, as well as our consultants, I think we have the best quality and most up-to-date information that there is. We also made some other new good connections in a couple of our congressional delegation offices. But we, I think, are right at the front of the pack alongside other municipalities in terms of what we know. And I found that to actually be quite a great relief, because it was great to just see an affirmation of everything that you're hearing about from Katie. What we're going to do next, now that that team has kicked off, and I think we've had our first meeting.
Yes, second meeting is on Wednesday.
So we are really excited to have that underway. That's not something that we've been able to tap into before. So when we were going through these earlier rounds of earmarks, it was not as well-organized. And so we really covered the landscape, but not in the most efficient strategic way that we could. And now we've got that in place, which is going to be terrific. So as Katie mentioned, we'll build that project pipeline. We'll continue to deepen and expand our relationships with stakeholders, I think, securing letters of support and partnership, so that things that would provide regional benefit to us that may not be our unique application are something that we're going to definitely lean into as well. We are going to use your agenda and circulate that with the federal delegation. You know our Washington Two associates' friends. They were just back in DC a week and a half ago, carrying our federal legislative agenda and saying, hey, the city is getting in the game. They're really interested. You saw their earmark requests. Here's the federal legislative agenda. So the next step is, we're going to take advantage of the August recess. Some of the congressional staff and members will be back here for a while. And we're already talking with some of them about how we can move forward and educate them about some of the things that they've already funded or that we are getting ready to ask them to fund. So that's one of the things we'll be doing soon. And then upon recommendation from our consultants, we're also looking at having a trip to Washington, DC in the fall, kind of in between their return from the August recess and before the elections. So we'll keep you posted as we get ready to do that, now that things are starting to reopen a little bit. But we are really excited to kind of fire on all cylinders here, now that we have this team put together, now that we're building our project pipeline guided by the federal agenda. We really think we have all the raw materials to really get going. And as Katie said, with the BIL specifically, there's four and a half more years in front of us. And so this is something, we've just kind of gotten out of the blocks, but now we're really excited to see how fast and well we can run from here. So happy to entertain questions that you might have about anything. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any Councilmember, Barstow, let's just go down in a line. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I really did feel the passion about BIL, so thank you. Just one comment and a question. Glad to see that the diversity advantage team is part of the BIL, especially as a way of carrying forward the focus on equity. A question for you in terms of who can become a partner with the requirements, and then is there going to be support for helping to reduce the barriers to applying for the grant?
That's a great question.
That is good. Do you want to start with that?
I can, I can take a stab. I think it really depends on each different grant program. I'll give you an example. We are currently assessing a potential application for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. And we are potentially looking at a partnership with a county, maybe King County. And at this point, we think that, we think that becoming a partner won't require an ILA or an MOU, but will require some opportunities for us to put together a joint application and letter of support. Every program is probably going to be a little different. We also have been looking at other agencies as part of this work. Agencies can also be supporters, but may not necessarily be cosigners of the entire grant application. So I think it really depends on each grant. But because it's such a priority of the administration, we are really seeking that out upfront, rather than waiting on the back end. It's a good question, and we really are prioritizing that work with those agencies.
And just to clarify, I was really also thinking about our smaller, so you had community-based organizations, so just thinking about how we're enabling them to participate, given their capacity limits.
That's a great point.
The one thing I'll mention, Councilmember, when we did the earlier round of earmarks earlier this year, which predated my arrival, but I know that our team did a really good job then of gathering letters of support from community partners, individual small businesses. And I think we're just going to kind of dig in from there and try to look further down the runway to see those coming, so that we can make sure we're not kind of making those one-offs and kind of just calling them cold, instead more enduring relationships and a mutual support for what they may have coming up in the pipeline if they're eligible applicants to.
Genese, if I may add.
Yeah.
We could always use your help, making those introductions, helping us to ensure that they, there is an opportunity for a dialogue and a conversation. So I would welcome your support on that, too.
Happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
I just wanted to say thanks. This is a great presentation. I feel so optimistic about the staff team we have right now. The two of you are just stars. But our transportation department, our external consultants who help us with the lobbying, I really think we have the right people looking into this and digging in. And absolutely, you can use your council members for the relationships we have to try to make sure that we get those letters of support, to make sure that we can be very, very competitive in obtaining grants, so that we can provide delivery of better services and infrastructure for the people of the city. So thank you. I just really wanted to say thanks.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I got my helmet ready. I'm ready to get in the game. So let's get going.
Do you have your running shoes, though?
No, you know, I got those, too. I'm all set. So, yeah, I completely agree with my colleague here, that it does feel like we're making some great progress. We're organized, we have an approach, we have a criteria that we're, that we're developing. I would love to hear more in terms, because I think there were, there's going to be a lot of temptation to go after a lot of different types of grants. And, and it might be difficult to kind of, and some of them, which ones are really going to go after and which ones we may not, we'd love to get, but we might not quite get. So I'd love to hear just a little bit more about that. And maybe it's too early for you to really comment on that, but would love to know just a little bit, a little bit more about that criterion approach as we go forward. But yes, and kudos to our city manager as well for getting a lot of these hires on board. But also, this is the perfect opportunity for this city, I believe, given our stature right now, to really start making some waves and making some asks and to, dare I say, throw our weight around a little bit and say, here's Bellevue, here's what we're about, this is why we need this money. You know, I'm really excited what that, what that's going to lead to. And especially with the partnership possibilities, I think there's going to be quite a few of those as well. They're going to want to, you know, play big and get in the game with us. So with that, I'll let you address that question as much as you can. It might be a slightly unfair question at this point, because it is early on, but maybe not. Go ahead.
Let me start, and then maybe let you jump in. So I think, that's an excellent question, because I think that is the temptation. Oh, my goodness, we caught the big fish.
Right.
Like, here's the big opportunity, we've got to run straight at it. And I And I think what is exciting particularly, not only about the federal legislative agenda, but about that project pipeline, is it gives us all the information to be able to really make that really informed evaluation, to say, hmm, this, the criteria for this grant are really geared more towards construction, but we need planning money. Or, here, we've got a great opportunity, but do we have the match? Or, what other funding sources can we layer together? You know that Washington just passed Move Ahead Washington. That brings on a bunch of other new resources, mostly in transportation, but also in clean energy, Fish Passage, et cetera. And so, really, it gives us all, kind of a real air traffic control view of our priorities and these criteria, and to really make some informed, careful decisions about where we really push hard, and what waits until next year, because it's more strategic, not because we didn't have the bandwidth, although bandwidth is also out there. But yes, exactly. And I think that'll be a conversation that we will continue to have with you, as things go on to evolve it, and to keep you apprised, because you are really important spokespeople to our delegation, to those agencies, and to other interested partners and stakeholders. Want to add anything?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that we're actually developing a checklist. So, once we have our project pipeline, then we would use that checklist internally to make sure that we are matching the right programs to the right projects. I started to indicate what some of those were, but I'll just read off a few more. First of all, what program is the right fit for that particular project that we want to advance? Or, is there a particular program where we have some projects, or we have a project that maybe we could expand upon? So, it's kind of that balance. I talked about the timeline and the cadence, that will be an important one. I talked about the requirements that would be upon Bellevue to assess, so whether there'll be a local match, or what kind of commitment there might be, for instance, the Buy America Commitment. I talked about making sure that the, that our projects are adhering to the administration priorities, so for instance, equity and climate change. When it comes down to it, though, it's also about, do we have the staffing capacity, and do we have those partnerships? One thing I forgot to mention is that we're not only just looking at public partnerships through public agencies, but also private partnerships as well. And so, we're embarking on those conversations in that grant that I mentioned earlier, the Safe Streets and Roads for All, we're looking at private partnerships as well. So, the, the actual checklist is still in development, because we've just had our first meeting, but I anticipate that we'll be able to share more about how it looks and operates the next time we meet.
Great, thank you.
You know, I just feel so much confidence in you both, and in your team, and it's a really exciting time. We have amazing projects. This is a time of opportunity, and when you say that part of your criteria is equitable and sustainable, that just makes me so happy. Thank you for putting that front and center, and I'm really looking forward to not only finding out what you think we can lobby for, but how we can advocate for you.
Thank you. We're excited, really.
Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with all that's been said. It's just amazing, and I was looking back on a couple of things. One is, this is, this is, I think, a great advancement of the approach on working with, with the feds. One of the biggest things we've done in a long time, and back when I was fairly new on the council, well, pretty new, with Light Rail, and one of the big things, and we put together and worked on getting funding for Light Rail, and a lot of, you know, people going to, to Washington and all, and funny thing was, the money was really cheap then, but not like it is now.
So, it was gas.
Yeah, so it was gas. But the interesting thing about it is that we're, we're building on what we've had here, and this is a great addition to this, and it's a very important asset, I think, from, from all our departments, of having this, your structure, and how to approach all the governmental relations and these things, and integrating it, so we're not just saying, well, this is what we do over in reports for governmental relations, and this is something else we do over here. So, I think it's, it's really good, and it's, I think that's something that we have, you know, kind of been needing to do, and we kind of work towards that. So, I think it's going to help all the departments to advance, too, because if we have this capacity to put this together, think about it, and go out and talk to people, instead of waiting till we need to do that, and then putting somebody together. And they've done good jobs, but this is just really putting the system better with, with people to do the job. So, the one, the other question I have, and this is back on not what you're doing, but always looking at staff capacity in, in the departments, delivering these things, and working on this and how that, and I think we're working on that as well. But I think, again, this system or this setup will, actually, I think, has helped focus on, a little more on how we're working together and have more communication, so we really know what's happening on this hand, and what's happening on this hand, and put it together. Really looking forward to working with you, and as mentioned, one of the things I think we can do more of, it's fun to do, is go out and talk to our congressional delegation. And, and back when we started working on, on stuff with the legislature as well, but I think, you know, working with congressional delegations is going to be even more important, so I'm looking forward to that, so, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Can I mention, and maybe Katie will ask you to talk about staff capacity, and how we're kind of projecting that, but I will say, that relationship with the congressional delegation is really important, and with their staff is critically important, as you know. I think one of the things that has been hard during COVID is a lot of those relationships, because of the virtual nature of things, have, they've just kind of stretched out. And so, I think reviving those will be important. I know when I've worked on federal appropriations in the past, the kind of candor you can get when you have that good trusted relationship, both with members, but also with their staff, as well as with federal agencies. I know one of my really formative experiences was, I joined a different government, who had just applied for a major federal grant coming out of Aura. The, it was a, oh goodness, I'm trying to remember which grant it was. Anyway, it was a transportation grant, and we, they got turned down, and so we went and we talked with USDOT to find out what we could have done better, and they were so terrific and so gracious, and really giving us constructive feedback, and I think we have a chance, hopefully not through, you know, trial and error, but really to really understand what they're looking for. We know the administration's priorities, and now, as the agencies really get their arms around what they're delivering and how they want to go about doing it, I think developing that rapport is going to be really essential, and I think between in-house folks and our extension through contract staff, I think we've got great doors open for us to do that. Do you want to talk about staff capacity?
Well, I, I just had written down consultant resources as one of those options or opportunities for us to consider. I'm glad Andrew is here, because we've actually been meeting, boy, Andrew, we've probably been meeting for about six months, just within transportation, and then we were able to stand this up from a one-city perspective. And so, this has been on our mind for quite some time. One thing that, though, that I thought I would share with you, is that during our first kickoff meeting of the BIL interdepartmental team, a few things became really apparent. One is that we can really streamline our resources. We can have a warehouse of information, so that we don't have to create it new every single time. So, that's one thing that we're going to be working on. And another thing that we'll be working on is, we have some amazing staff who work on grants already, but primarily in the transportation department. So, Mia and Eric are just fantastic, and have been very successful. How can we provide training? How can we cross-train, so that more folks here at the city can be as successful as some of the, some of the staff that we already have on hand? So, it is going to be a challenge. I think that we will need to be mindful of staff capacity and resources, and perhaps reach out when need, when need be, but that's exactly why we created the team in the first place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn?
Yes, well, thank you, the dynamic duel. I, too, am super excited about this topic and the one-city approach. You know, I really think about how to be more strategic, and I think that we've been preparing for a long time in our city. I mean, I, I don't think we lift up enough the staff that we have, and the relationships over the years that we've, they've built, with a lot of partners and federal agencies over the years. So, we are very well-known in DC for, and USDOT, for our work around multimodal safety and Vision Zero, and so laying that groundwork goes a long ways towards when our applications go in. Those agencies already know us, and they know what we're capable of delivering, and I think that goes a long ways towards making sure that we have the right partners, and we can be as successful as possible. And it'll be so important, as we look at our growth and the projects that we're going to have to deliver from the transportation standpoint. I was thinking about what Councilmember Barxstill talked about related to equity, and at our retreat, we started talking a little bit about how we are, create access to opportunities for our small women and minority-owned businesses, and certainly, I think that's one of the elements of equity that will be in these applications, along with the many partners we have. So, I was really glad to hear you talk about both the public and the private side of those partnerships, and how we can leverage them even more. You know, I would say that the most exciting part about the BIL is the fact that Mayor Pete comes from cities, right, who's head of USDOT, and then the person that was assigned to oversee the BIL implementation was the former mayor of New Orleans, Mitch Landreau. And so, I think that, to the degree that they also understand the strife of cities, I understand that there's, they're working on, on one application being available for multiple grants, so that hopefully we're seeing that we don't have to do quite so much work to pursue every single grant application, so I'm excited about that. I would say that, I think, other councilmembers have talked about this, please lean on us, because we also have relationships and information that we can share. I mean, certainly, when I was on the National League of Cities Transportation Infrastructure, when we were trying to get money directly to cities, those relationships already exist, and so, to the degree that we can be that conduit to help through the National League of Cities, we'd really like to do that. I would say, too, we haven't talked about this part, but you did mention a little bit about the, the matching funds. We might want to think about whether the TIFI alone itself, I think there's been some revamping of that program, so if that is an opportunity to get some lower interest rate funding, so that we can maximize the, the funding that we have to be able to build quicker. Inflation's just eaten our lunch, so if we wait a long time, things are more and more unaffordable. And maybe this is an opportunity to revamp or reimagine our Commute Pool application that we tried for a couple of years ago, where we were not successful. I think we had 25 different partners we had brought in to, to look at pursuing that funding, so I know, I'm just excited that we're looking at, right, the right project pipeline, the right partners, and the right timing, because I think those are the keys, so that we don't exhaust everybody in year number one, recognizing that this is a five-year program, and being strategic with more probability to get funding is more important than just a, a scatter approach to this. So, super excited about the presentation and what's in front of us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Great.
Okay, well, this is the end of this meeting, but we were, we are, a week from now, it will be the Fourth of July, so we will not be here on that Monday, but we will get together on July 5th, which is a Tuesday next week, and we will be at the Fourth of July at the Downtown Park, and I hope that you will join us there. Be a wonderful show, and hopefully we'll have weather like today. So, with that, our meeting is adjourned.